Council will call them in order for the record is July eighteen, twenty twenty-three at four thirty P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with real call attendance.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Hogland.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Kavner.
Yeah.
And Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoben.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion a second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. Guys have it and the agenda is agreed to. We're adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoben.
I move that we adopt the consent agenda and that they approve the consent agenda and that the mayor be authorized to sign and clerk to attest.
Have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. Guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we will go on to item eight, which is Department Commission Report from the Mayor's Office Regarding the Neighborhood Grants Program. I will turn this over to the squad.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here on the behalf of the Mayor's Office to talk about the great program of the Neighborhood Grant Program. The memo distributed to you is outlining the twenty twenty-three Neighborhood Grant Program. As we talked about last year, the intent of the program is to beautify the community and get input from the stakeholders and take the aspects of volunteerism and creating Meridian as the premier premier community to live and work and raise a family. The selection panel in the grading system came to council and was done on seven items. Project description, the evaluation of volunteers in the group, timeline effectiveness, project impact, and the project budget. Below that, you will see the staff recommendations for this item. These items, we had three staff recommendations, the compiled scores. Each one of these come in as a community event, a cleanup project and a maintenance project at the senior center. Going in a little more depth, the community or the connection is the cure event. This is going to be an educational program for high school students in the valley or in Meridian. Talk about mental health awareness. This engages many of the volunteers in our in our community and as well as grows with our group and our our vision. The I Heart Treasure Valley Cleanup. This is looking at any items or any areas that we possibly need some cleanup items such as high schools, any areas that might have noxious weeds as well as crepit lots and then also neighborhoods that might need some help just to maintain. And lastly, the senior center needed repairs upon the senior center too as well. And we can go down the list. That's just staff recommendations for these items. I'm seeking guidance and approval from from council, and I'd like to have a better conversation on what this would look like in the future. With the allocated with the recommended budget items or the recommended fund request, we are at nine thousand dollars or a little under ten thousand dollars out of the fifty grand that was given to us or allocated for the program. As we move forward, we would like to have some guidance on some items for that, whether it's partnership with private stakeholders such as HOAs and other companies as well. The additional guidelines of how large of a cap we would like to have. Something that has been in the program for a while is the request to not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And we had a couple of, we had a budget item or not a budget item, a request, a grant request to clean up the area near Franklin and Meridian. And we all can know the intersection that we're talking about. It is a needed section that needs to have some repairs, but we have, we have some shortfalls that we need to understand of whether that would be guidance for other people or other entities, whether we can do that and whether these private stakeholders would be willing to do it, and that's private property owners in that area. With that, this is in front of you as a needed conversation, and I request the approval of council, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jake. Council questions, Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. I I must say I am admittedly a bit disappointed to see Gulfview in the the bottom this year again. I feel like that they've done an excellent job of presenting their need and having justification for it. So a couple of questions. One, is it a hard and fast that we're only limited to granting two, a maximum of two? And also so in that regard, could we not then spend the balance of the funds on some of the other applicants this year? I guess I'm not understanding why we wouldn't be able to spend the balance of those funds.
Um, we also need to look at whether that's a property that is going to be privately owned in an HOA. If that's the will of the committee, we could definitely put it back out there. And of course, this is just staff recommendations and you have complete control and make motions as you feel. Did that answer your question, Councilwoman?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Help me understand how the privately owned property affects our decision.
Um, I would have
liability concerns.
Sorry, Mayor, Councilwoman. I would have to yield to probably attorney on that to understand whether we can or can't. It did not exceed and was when we were graded in this program, we had the four applications from Gulfview and did not exceed the mark above the if we were going to go down in allocation, we have the Boise Meridian RV Resort, which is the southwest corner of Meridian Franklin would be next on the list. And that would take up the majority of those funds. Again, you can but I would yield to an attorney on that or the city attorney to understand whether we can give that to private property owners.
Mr. Neri, would you like to weigh in on that question?
So I didn't completely hear the entire question. Is it, can we give grant funding to a private source? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, essentially the conversation is to this point in time, there's been a direction by council and others to not utilize these funds on private property. It's been limited to city property to my knowledge.
I do have somebody coming in.
For that.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilwoman Perro, generally the guidance that we've received in the initial years is that wouldn't use city funding unless it was on public property or right of how we can work with the Attorney's Office of Finance. Common lots of HOA.
Dave, if you want to get into the mic.
If it's established right away, we've considered those. Then the negotiation comes into, if you have a property like an HOA, are they willing to go that level of creating an easement or creating right of way or creating a public property to receive the funding? But that's where we've gone so far.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I was under the impression when we started the program that it was for organizations like homeowners associations. And so I guess that's maybe where some of my confusion was. I understand what what you're seeing. And obviously, the attorneys would need to discuss whether, in my mind, the way I'm seeing this is we're granting funds to that organization. And beyond that, I'm not sure where our liability would lie. So I would be interested in hearing more about if that's something, as Jacob has asked, if that is a limitation of ours, then maybe we take the homeowners associations or we clarify that when the applicants are making their applications in the future.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilwoman Perro, I agree, and I think the the level of engagement this year was disappointing to say, how do we, we're always looking at how do we improve and how do we get more applications that are viable and manageable? So that's something that we'll take back to the group and look at, and I think it's important to hear the feedback from the the council to say, if that's some place that you're comfortable going, then the, we need to know that and so that we can make
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
I'm very comfortable going that direction because I feel like that was the whole purpose of a neighborhood program. I don't feel like we can call it a neighborhood program and then just say it's on public property, to be fair. But in addition, for item number four, so that is on right of way, but my understanding is there was, there was some concern about the fence need, removing the old fence from the current residents' properties. And then thus, that's not public property. And so was that issue ever worked out with the applicant, how that would work without having to affect private property of the owners?
Um, that was, that was a conversation piece that we had to talk about. They were seeking approval from them, and that would be a conditional, a part of being able to fulfill it. We, we talked with the applicant and saying that the individual would need to to get granted permission to be able to remove that type of fencing, garbage, other, other items. But again, that would, that would have to be done by the approval of them. So that was a part of the condition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, I'm Mr. Jay.
So, Mr. Mayor is the council. So the rationale here is, again, we as a city cannot gift something to a private entity. So we can't buy something for an HOA that is for them to own because then we would be essentially turning over a city asset to a private party, and we can't do that. So that's the reason why it's always been in public areas, public access. The secondary reason is access. So you're taking public funds and you're putting them in a place that only a limited amount of people can actually go use it, play on it, see it, because it's a private HOA property. So those are the two reasons. One, again, we can't just buy something for another entity or another group, even HOA. And again, you're limiting the access of people to be able to use it or be able to see it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Some feedback. Yeah, I have, I have concerns about that. Just offered a different perspective along the lines of what Mr. Neri was saying, just, you know, if if the primary benefit of the use of taxpayer funds is for a neighborhood HOA and those property owners, it doesn't really affect Meridian at large. I just think it's hard to justify using taxpayer funds for that. I think it might be interesting to explore, though, the difference of, you know, this main intersection here by the RV Resort. You know, that that feels a little bit different because it's, you know, a big kind of focal point for the whole city. What were some of the things you were grappling with in terms of how to get your arms around a project like that? And where does that stand if we, if we were interested in pursuing that?
Mayor, Council, Councilwoman, thank you for the question. We had a extensive talk with the applicant. They're still interested no matter what happens with with what happens for this decision. They view it as a beautification of the area for all of the businesses and all the residences. That being said, they understand the challenges that there is some A C H D property, there's private property. And they have a letter that was attached, a part of the application that talked with A C H D. I, again, I would probably talk to legal about that or the city attorney on whether that was something that could be enforced and would be standing. But they are working hard and would like to continue to work with us on on that item. But this was just how it was scored, and it was just scored below and did not have, didn't have enough funds to continue on, and as the guidance says, until that's fulfilled.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Strater.
Sorry, just one more question. Would they be interested in pursuing it with us, you know, with other sources of funding besides the city neighborhood grant program? I mean, if, you know, there was a smaller allocation of funds, are they interested in discussing that further?
Mayor, Council, Councilwoman. I don't want to speak for the applicant, but with how they have continued to follow up and what they would like to do, I would, I would like to reach back out to them and follow up with you on that. I just wouldn't want to put words in somebody else's mouth.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kaver.
Maybe the council member Strater's question, just maybe a little flavor. I think too, one of the biggest challenges with that hard corner project is not just the amount required, but I think the intention was from the committee is to not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. And so when you're looking at the totality of all the requests, we could do this one, which had some concerns and other jurisdictional challenges, or there were others that were maybe free from some of that burden. Because I think there was some conversation from the committee really liking that project, but feeling like with the limitations that they had, they were maybe hamstrung from being able to pick that particular one. But I think there was a lot of support for that project, there just were some limitations. So I think a continued conversation about that makes sense, and I would just maybe ask Jake, Mayor, City Attorney, you know, let's continue to find some, some solutions to some of these challenges of not city-owned projects that that have an impact on our community. And I know when this was first envisioned, I talked a lot about the the Settlers Canal. There's that spot between Ten Mile and Black Cat. But all the homeowners technically own that dirt along the way. It's not even controlled. They don't have a homeowners association. So again, I don't know that how we, how we solve that challenge, but I see this program as a, as a way to do that. And so I know we're baby stepping this a little bit. We've made some great strides from where we were last year, but I think next year is really the time where we, we take that big leap and start doing some things that are bold, things that have a real impact on our community. Jake, I did have a question, though, for you. In your recommendation, the recommendation that came was the funding request for the connection is the cure event. So they were asking for like close to ten grand, and we're recommending nine, about nine hundred bucks. Am I reading that right? And if so, maybe walk me through that.
Uh, Mayor, Councilman. So if you look, there's actually one more piece. They had two applications.
Oh.
They had Battle of the Bands, which would not have fit within the timeframe that we were trying to administer this grant. And the
The one was the other. Okay.
The other one is just
That's right. It's perfect.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Just way in. I think if we look at neighborhood projects, just to kind of continue that discussion, because there, if there is some sort of substantial public usage and it's on through homeowners association property and those types of things. Now, again, Mr. Neri would say, okay, what does substantial mean and all those good things, which that that should be something that they have to prove to us that there is substantial usage by others. It's not just their own own enjoyment and pleasure that that they have to do that, because I know, like, in our subdivision, there is a drain that has a pathway through the whole thing that everything around it is all HOA. But because of the substantial use by public, if there was something that needed, they wanted benches along there to rest. Okay, you could make that argument, but you have to say that's there for public use and but yeah, that's, I think, staff needs to talk about some things and maybe come back with some recommendations. We can kick around some more and see what what we can do with that. So but I'm, you know, the three that that are outlined here are good, good projects and does some good for the, for the community and gets involvement by volunteers and different things. And in the southwest corner, I think, same thing. What can we do? That is a kind of an eyesore and making work for everybody. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you, Councilman Hogland, for bringing that up because my impression of the Gulfview, at least one of the applications, it's on the, the trees that are overextended and that are breaking down a block wall is on the public, I mean, it's next to the public sidewalk. And there is a public element to that, which is that those trees are jetting out onto the sidewalk. And then the fence that is being affected is by the sidewalk. So I agree that there may be some situations where it might overlap. In addition, I think there was one that was a bridge. I think that bridge went over a walkway that's connected maybe in our pathway system. I'm not sure, but if that, that to me also is another element, like if there's a pathway that's part of our pathway system that goes through a neighborhood, and there's some improvement that needs to be done to that, then maybe we do have an overlapping conversation. So at least on those two, I felt like that there was reason reasonable. So I think that he brings up a really good point of maybe we need to look into that, like, is there something in the neighborhood that's a public use with the HOA? I, as a, as a Realtor, I regularly run across pieces of land that an HOA maintains, but it's, it's not deeded to the HOA. Just, just like what happens with canals. So yeah, that's a good, a good point to bring up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Jacob, I, I support the recommendations. I understand the the rubric that you're working with. Not all programs make sense everywhere and, and I think the type of solution that that Councilman Kavner's talking about is really the, I think, the bigger genesis of why this program was created to try and tackle projects like that, which don't have a singular structure to help organize and plan. So it's definitely not a solution today to try and solve, but, but if a program like this were to continue down the road, it would, I think it would be nice to see how that type of kind of public, visible, really an eyesore is what he's describing. I know exactly what you're talking about. How we can help bring folks together and address it or similar type projects. So for what you have presented, I'm supportive. I understand the scoring and what you were presented in the work of the group to, to score the application. So I don't have any problem funding what you've got on the board here in front of us, but it would be nice to take a step back. We kind of did this with participatory budgeting. It's a great idea. But round peg, square hole doesn't fit in every community, which is fine. And we just got to make sure that we're, we're confident enough to pivot if it doesn't really fit for how our community is designed, the age of our neighborhoods, et cetera. So that's a, the next twelve months, something for the group to ponder.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kaver.
I know you're looking for recommendations, you're looking for action, or do we need a vote? What do you, what are you looking to to get from us?
I'm looking for your recommendations, sir. And if, if that is something where you would like me to, I can see three different options for the carried over money and for the options that we can have. And taking it as what's the path forward for it to prove, either approve the recommended, recommended projects and move forward with those and coming back to council and working with you on whether that's the other allocated money to possibly fund other projects as well. There's also discussion that the motions can be carried by you and if you'd like to change the recommendations.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm supportive of the recommendations. I'm happy to, if you need a vote, to vote in favor of that. And then, again, I think, kind of to your point, a request to maybe go back to the applicant for the Boise Meridian RV Resort. Let's see if we can work through that, and if that results in a future budget amendment, know that it would be received friendly on, on my part, and it's something that I think would be open to the conversation.
Was that a motion to accept the committee's recommendations?
Mayor, it is a motion to accept the committee's recommendations.
Second. Have a motion a second to accept the committee's recommendations. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
The only point of discussion in my mind is that I, if I remember correctly, last year when we were having conversation, there, there wasn't as much favor for a, of that. I was kind of surprised to see that be the number one because there wasn't as much favor for events as there was for projects, because the events, there isn't a way for us to really you know, know the result, to really understand what the result is. So I don't know if there has been a change in that perspective from, from the program or from fellow counsel. But that was kind of what we, we threw around last year was concerns over not really being able to see what the results of the event were. So I, I guess I was, I just want to bring that point up. And if, if it's something that council would like to clarify.
Are there discussion on that topic or the rest of the, or on the motion from council? And all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. As habit and the direction is given to go do the rest of the work that will require contracts and agreements that will come back to council one by one. And thank you. Our next item is item nine, which is the Mayor and City Council Compensation Committee, report recommendation. Invite Mr. Everts up for a presentation on behalf of the committee.
Yes, Mr. Everts, Josh, three oh three East State Avenue, Old Town Meridian, eight three six four two. I love doing this. This is, I think, my favorite thing that I get to do in front of you guys. So this has been my, I think, third, which means six years of doing this, this review. So just as background, city code, I believe, calls for a group of public servants, mix of business owners and city staff and council, former council people that can sit on this and talk about compensation and make recommendations to you guys for consideration. So we went through that process again this year. So what we're going to go through today is a little outline of who served this year. We got some new folks, a lot of old folks on there as well. I feel like I'm becoming one of those. We're going to look at a little bit of market data. Staff did a great job of pulling this together for us. Again, not as anything but interesting data points to look at. We'll talk a little bit about that. Some of our observations, mayoral recommendations, city council recommendation. Overall, I don't actually think we updated this contents list correctly. It's in a different order than what I'm going to talk about, but I don't care. It'll be fun. So here's the makeup of the committee. So you can see the names there. A great group of people. What's been nice is we've maintained a lot of continuity. So a lot of these things that we've wrestled with for a decade, we've had the same names on there. I am a landowner in Scotland. So that's the appropriate Lord title will be acknowledged by the City of Meridian during this hearing. Thank you for that. So some market data. We did have a series of Council or Neri, was it three meetings that we did over the last, over the last three weeks where we got together, spent a lot of thoughtful time, wrestled with a lot of thoughtful things, but as some data points, this is some market data that Meridian staff put together for us in terms of whether, what other municipalities are doing. So we have our current mayoral salary at, took under a hundred and twenty thousand, Boise's at one fifty. And then we just have a hodgepodge of, of other municipalities, Nampa being a bigger one, Caldwell being a bigger one, Idaho Falls, but just kind of gives you an idea. I think that what's to note in both mayoral compensation and city council compensation, and this is something that we should probably bill add in the future, is the trend in all those municipalities is up. So they are all passing raises. They are all setting raises that go on into the future. So the recommendation that is part of our recommendation that we're making, that is not outside of what's happening around the rest of the state. So we're not an oddball in wanting to see our elected officials be compensated fairly and appropriately. City council salary data. So currently in Meridian, for council members, we're at seventeen three. Council president has a ten percent uplift on that, so they're at nineteen. But you can see Boise's at twenty-seven, and again, you, you kind of have a mix that's, that's right in that kind of ten to thirteen range for everybody else around the state. So I do believe that Meridian in general, one of the things that's just been an observation of the committee is we've been really, really excited about our city council members. Like, we don't feel like you guys are a group of people that show up on Tuesday nights and aren't visible the rest of the time and, and, you know, throw some thoughts out there and make some people happy, some people mad, and then go home the rest of the week. Like, we see a lot of activation in the community. We see a lot of time being clearly, you guys can't bring the kind of value that you've been bringing without doing work outside of the hours that you're in here. So, so we feel that the, the work and the challenges of Meridian. As I said, I think the last six years, you know, as Boise sneezes, we catch a cold. So we are, we are dealing with a dynamic valley. So we are, we are dealing with a dynamic valley where we have things that are happening all over and land use issues and just change. And I think we're asking a lot of you guys as city council member, and so therefore we'd like to compensate you. Committee history. So number one, we want to maintain this. So we talk about that all the time to kind of kick off our meetings. Like, do we really enjoy doing this? Is it appropriate? Should we recommend a different methodology? We love it. So just on behalf of all of us that serve on it, we we enjoy getting together. Bill keeps buying lunches for us. I don't think he's getting quite the participation that he would like in the lunches that he's doing there, but lots of participation on the Zoom calls. Thoughtful, so we want to continue that in the future. In 2019, the committee recommended was approved increases for city council. And then just a cost of living increase for the mayor. So that was in 2019. In 2021, it was recommended and proved increases to city council and mayoral compensation beyond just cost of living adjustments. So we appreciate that. It feels good. We do put a lot of hard work into it. So the fact that you guys are hearing us and and approving those things makes us feel valued. So we appreciate that. So mayoral recommendations. So we believe pretty, pretty strongly that the salary is out of line with current market conditions. So what we're recommending for you guys to approve is a 10% increase in 2024. So just just the nature of this, the way our our cycles work, because it's outside of the cycle of the normal city budget. So this gets approved. Bill, help me out here. It gets approved by you guys now, but it doesn't go into effect until January one. It's on a calendar year, correct? Yeah. So, yeah, so calendar year 2024, we'd see a 10% increase. 5.8% increase for 2025. And just to describe a little bit of how we got to those numbers, a little bit of this is we're playing catch up. Like, we don't have a crystal ball. We we don't get to forecast inflation. We don't get to forecast things that that are that are happening in the valley and and growth and and things of that nature. So we are a little bit reactive. And that's certainly been the track record. Kind of being a storyteller over the last 20 years, we've really transitioned our city council. It used to be a lot of retired people that had time to donate, and so they didn't want raises and they worked for very little. And we've just had a lot of conversations over the last eight years that I've been doing this, that we want to incent, you know, great people willing to step up and serve. And we realize compensation has to be a part of that. We just can't rely on rich people that have time to volunteer, if we want to get the best and the brightest and and kind of widen the the base of people that can serve. So that 10% figure really comes from the fact city staff, just in just cost of living adjustments has received about 13% over the last two years. And so really, that 10%, we're we're just trying to play a little bit of catch up. The 5.8 is actually the 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 current inflation rate, the CP consumer price index rate that we're operating under right now. And we just, as a committee, felt like that was our, that was our best number that we could come up with as far as something that we could recommend, that we thought that you guys would be able to like, we want to be very sensitive to numbers that we put in front of you and make sure that those are reasonable and and thought out. And that was the best number that we could come up with for that. So what that means in actual dollars is that from 23 to 25, we'd be moving the mayoral salary from 119 to 131, and then ultimately 139. City council, we feel the same way. We think salaries are out of line. We're going to recommend that same same 10% in 2024 and a 5.8% increase in 25. In real dollars, I know these percentages sound big, but when we start talking about city council as a percentage, it looks big in real dollars. It's it's not that much. It's not that we don't appreciate you, but we we just, we want to make sure that that we're being consistent across the recommendation. But it does add up. So in 2023, we're we're seeing you guys at 17,000. That would be moving over $20,000 by 2025. So some analysis, some thoughts that we kind of organized. We 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 really have gone on this journey and really, you know, over 20 years, I think, played catch up. I think when I first talked about this six years ago, we had a really big discrepancy. And we talked about eating the elephant one bite at a time, and I think we've done that. I think you guys have made some some incremental approvals. So that this year was actually, I think, the easiest year as far as there there wasn't a lot of negotiations. There was a lot of thoughtful inputs. But overall, everybody felt very, very good that we were, we were in a in a good place and and it was looking like the compensation was 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 reasonable. We did have lots of discussions about comparing city leadership to managing a small, you know, company, and this would not be a small company. So I'm kind of specifically speaking about mayoral compensation right now. You know, if we were running a company that had a couple hundred million dollars in a budget and hundreds of employees, I'm not taking that job at 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 the current mayoral pay, but then we talked about some of the other attributes of of that position and and so there were lots of, I guess, the point is there were lots of thoughtful conversations, but we felt very comfortable with the recommendations made. The one thing that I highlighted highlighted in there that, you know, a desire to ensure quality and then broad participation, that actually came from Dom serving on our commission. And Dom made the observation of, you know, I think it's important to continue to incent young people participating in sort of this elective process. And there are a lot of families and young professionals here in the city that the compensation specifically, as we talk about it, for city council really does matter. Like, I'm an old washed up guy. You know, so I don't have kid stuff in the evening and I'm not, you know, trying to, you know, go to sporting events and stuff like that. So I have lots of flexibility, but some young families that might want to serve in this capacity, Liz, they're giving up something. So we want to make sure that we're compensating that time and rewarding those people for the sacrifices that they're making. Recommendation, these increases are smaller as a percentage than our 20, what would have been the 2021 recommendation. So that that year is wrong in there. But so as a percentage, we're we're getting closer, like we're we're getting, we're narrowing the gap here. We feel strongly that they're that they're in line, but but the bite of the apple that we're taking is is getting smaller. These increases were factored against, again, like I talked about, the raises that were given to city staff. We're only recommending that 10% from two years ago, while general city staff have seen 13% increase during that same period. Proposed increases only result in appropriate corrections based on, again, this idea of inflation that's occurred as well as expected value. Like, we we appreciate the work that's been done. We want to reward you for that, and we expect it in the future. Like, I would love to be the guy that I I love coming and and talking about raises. But I will also be the guy that comes and talks about cuts if it's warranted, but I don't expect that. I always put this at the bottom of my things. Failure to approve these things only hurts us. We're going to get further behind if you guys choose not to approve these recommendations. So it's obviously your choice and and you guys get to make the call, but you know, tru- trust us, you know, trust the work that we're doing. It's it's good. And, yeah, and we get to revisit all this stuff in two years. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Josh. Council questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Josh, thanks. Appreciate being a glutton for punishment, coming back to us with this every two years. So the last time you were before us, and again, no surprise, I get a little cantankerous about this particular issue for the I I like the recommendation for the mayor, but two years ago, you brought a recommendation to us and it's kind of a comment you I had asked, you know, why this amount? He said, well, we thought it was an amount to like thread the needle that council would support it. And we said, hey, go back and bring us what you what you really think the recommendation should be. And you and Gretchen, the team went back and met again and came back with a final. It doesn't appear that that's the case this particular year, that you feel like this is the the right number. And so my my question is, does this get us back to where you think that we should be in terms of being on track with compensation? Or do you feel that we are still behind from where we need to be?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh. I feel like a lot of the discussions that were happening with our committee were really talking about a lot of inflationary things and feeling like we we had not kept the compensation up like we were taking care of other city staff. So really, most of the talks were about inflation. We felt like we have gotten the number, the number is feeling more healthy right now. I think from the mayoral seat, I think that that's something that that we talked about. We felt very comfortable with this recommendation. I do feel like there were some strong sentiments on on the committee that 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 probably needs to be one that 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 we look at two years from now as a as a possible adjustment up. But really, most of the, most of the increases were really in relationship to to inflation and just economic things.
Councilman Cavanagh.
So one, thanks to the committee, and I and I appreciate you kind of spotlighting Dom's comments about broad representation, because I think that is, it's, I think, all of us, our vision or hope is that we've always will be a citizen-led city council, and and you and Gretchen really hit the nail on the head with that two years ago. That argument has resonated with me for two years. As I saw this on the agenda, I went back and watched your guys' presentation because it 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 shifted my my perspective. So this question comes from then, you know, I think is important that we recruit great people to be on our our city council. A piece that I struggle with is what's, by how many dollars we invest, what does that, what does that result in a better person, right? Like, is there, if 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 we doubled this amount, do we double the quality of people that would then apply for city council? If we if we cut it in half, do we lose 50% of the people that would maybe want to serve in this role? That's the piece that I'm struggling to connect is how salary is going to equal better quality people on the city council.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, actually, to further kind of expand on Dom's comments, one of the things that he was sharing was some anecdotal things that a lot of, a lot of younger people are not working one job or two jobs. They're working three jobs, right, to like make ends meet. You know, my son down in California just moved in with multiple people just to make a rent work in California. Like, it's just, it's very, cost of living, especially in the valley here, has gone way not way up. So I don't know that I have some empirical data as to if the council and compensation was 40 instead of 20, are we going to get a better candidate? I I don't know. But what I do believe is that the number, we do want to incent people that are of quality that might be able to exchange that third job and and serve as a city council member where the compensation, you know, would be as a as a a second or third income, $20,000 is material. You know, nobody can live off of that as a single thing, but as a, as something where a young person could go, boy, I'd I'd be willing to give up my night job so that I could serve as a city council member. But beyond that, I don't know that I have any empirical data.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. So I'm just trying to remember the last couple of years. I think I think there was an 8% in 2021 and a five last year. Is that how you got to the 13%?
For city?
Vice versa?
Yeah, I think so.
Mm hmm. Okay. And that's, and so where did the the 10% then come from? Was it just kind of like, well, we want to stay under 13? Or it's, it does, to me, it still seems like a bit of a high percentage in one year relative to how we typically make decisions regarding employees.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pro. It was, it was a, it was a, what's the right word? This is chemo brain. It was a compromise. As we sat down, looked at it, and and we did not only look at staff pay increases, but we looked at what was happening with the other things that don't fall under staff, like fire and their compensation is different. The number just felt right. I I know that 10% sounds like a lot, but but, you know, it is less than what's happened over. And again, we're just playing catch up, right? And we have to do this and kind of project this over two years. So it it just was the number that felt right for the group. We did have members of the group that said, look, if we did 13 for staff, let's do 13 across the board. And and we wrestled with that and said, well, instead of doing that, let's, let's take, let's, let's make it 10, but then let's throw the current CPI index of 5.8 on the second year so that over this two years, it would be 15.8. So if we had done over the last two years, 13% for city staff, we are projecting more pain in the economy, and and it was universally agreed to by the group, and we have some good business people on there that said, look, weren't this this inflation and 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 cost of capital is not going down in the valley? So so that's that's part of it. So I think the the challenge is if if we want to take a smaller rate, again, we're just, we're going to be further, further kind of in the red down the road.
I appreciate you sharing that with us. To Councilman Cavanagh's question, I know for me, I I give up a lot of income to do. I'm self-employed, and the only way I could do this position is if I'm is because I'm self-employed from a time commitment standpoint. And I give up a lot of personal income to do this. And so taking that into consider, you you know, it sounds like that the committee talked about all the different variables for folks that will run for a council seat. And I know that while while we may be moving away from kind of a retired person's pursuit, I think I'm seeing it then lean a little bit more towards folks that have a real flexibility in their in their day jobs. And that's still a limiting factor then for anyone. And so while it may not bring a better quality candidate, it may bring more candidates. And and in that, you would hope that then your quality would increase just by sheer number. But I I think that I I really appreciate the the pursuit of wanting to open up that opportunity for folks because, like I said, there's a lot of people that couldn't do this just because they don't have a position that's flexible enough, and it really does limit people. So on average, you know, some of us are putting in 20 plus hours a week to do council. It's a lot. And so thank you that the, for the, you know, thank you to the commission for just taking all those factors into account.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilwoman Pro. It's, it's really fun to kind of wrestle with these things. And and I guess the point that I would make is we still look at this, and we talked about this point, as public service, right? And we don't want to lose that. Like, you're, you're, there's an aspect of this that, like, the mayor is always the mayor. There's something of that that comes with the job, right? And so so we don't want to eliminate that and make this a business. Like, that's not the purpose of this, you know, committee or you know, trying to get the salaries to a range that that, you know, you're going to, you know, attract necessarily the the high, like, we just want to be very thoughtful, you know, but not lose that public service part of it, because we do appreciate, like, nobody, it's not lost on any of us. Like, we were all laughing that even if we were doubling the salaries, some of us on there, myself included, is like, I would never take the job. It doesn't make sense, probably because I I don't want to serve anybody. So other observations.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm just a comment. I think you're trying to strike the right balance between making sure people are doing it for the right reasons, but at the same time, it does acknowledge the inflation, you know, environment that we've been in the last few years. So I think that makes sense. I guess a question I have with the 5% in the subsequent year, do you guys envision, and I think we're all hoping that inflation starts to go back to the long term average of like closer to 3%. Do you guys envision going forward that this is the sweet spot? And it'll, you know, sort of stay in that three to 5% range? Or what was the discussion looking forward?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader. I don't know that we talked a lot about, or not that I can recall of what we think it looks like two years from now. In general, we just talked about the spirit of this kind of committee and that we get to wrestle with it. And we felt like the hard work that had been done over the last 10 years made this one a lot easier than than historically. I don't, I don't know what the future holds. I do feel that, you know, and we're not trying to compare ourselves, and I'll just talk about Boise, like, this isn't an effort in, you know, well, we we need to be 75% of where Boise is at. That's not the the effort. Like, I was more interested in, are these municipalities doing raises? And they are. Like, that was the data point that I wanted to see. It's a different city. It's a different job, just like all these other municipalities are. So I I I don't think that we had any specific discussions about what this might look like two years from now, other than we're very, very convinced that the committee, as it's organized under code and the work that we're doing is really good and and a great way to approach this, even though we play catch up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Retired. Got to have a speak. Josh, great presentation. I've sat, Lieutenant, I've been sitting tonight for many, many years. And it always interested me that if it was sitting there at that time, most of them would say, due to their commitment and service to the city, not about the money, don't give me a raise. And I heard that. But it's because of you and this committee, take that away from us, should.
But it's because of you and this committee, take that away from us, should, that you do what's needed. Making sure everybody's compensated correctly. Most important thing is looking at where we need to be in the future and taking care of that. Future leaders. Quad, which you guys did. Fair. It's hard to sit up now from a different chair and say, oh. I know how many hours I put in some weeks. My wife reminds me when I. You do it because of that commitment we've made, every single person up here. Appreciate hearing your comment.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilman Overton, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'll make sure that that sentiment gets back to the group. But the other thing that we did talk about that I guess I didn't share my comments is, you know, the city designed this to to go down in an election year, every year. And so we do talk as a group about what pressures are we putting on you guys to vote on compensation? And I guess my encouragement to you is you got to separate the two. Like, at the end of the day, I think I think, John, your comment about we're taking care of the future, just as much as we're we're recognizing the work that's been done. And I think that it's just important to do the right thing. Because there is going to be, you and I are going to wear off this mortal coil, and there's going to be another generation that.
And Council, if I could, I understand my my role is this is my day job is is different. I just want to speak up for your, but what is here for you all? Because each person here, I know, gives up something different and unique and no less important than anybody else from that standpoint. Councilman Cavanagh, you may not travel on a Tuesday to another location because you need to be here. So you have to get up at 5:00 AM and do a hard turnaround. Councilman Hogan has to take vacation days from his job and give up, you know, that type of compensation in order to be here for some of our all day events. Councilman Borton could be billing these hours right now. And and, you know. And making up for other lost needs within his family. And I think Councilwoman Pro talked about it, and Councilwoman Schrader did, just for the most obvious, with their family giving up that time. And that's value added as well. So whether it's for the value you receive or for the recognition, there is a cost to everyone's time, energy and effort. On the council side in that regards. And and to the point, the money may help, may make up for some of that. For some, it's different for everyone's perspective, but there's a cost to everybody in in that regard. So just I appreciate you guys trying to put a value to that cost as best you can, not knowing who will be serving here next at any point in time. And that's, I think, the other thing, no one here is entitled to what this compensation will be. The voters will decide who is entitled to whatever compensation is set.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Thank you for clarifying that. I wasn't using my life example as a reason to say it's not worth it because it's 100% worth it. It's just was an example to show how much I appreciate the consideration. And I know that you were doing the same. So thank you for sharing that about all of all, because all of us, I don't have a single doubt in their commitment to public service. And so I think all of us gladly gladly do it. So thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Lord Everts, I appreciate the work of the committee as well. Understand the the task you've been given and the data that supports the decision. Maybe want to plant a seed and challenge you, and I'd love to discuss this with you offline too. But one of the the purposes behind the compensation that you referenced is to try and attract new candidates. And not necessarily tethered to doing this thing things the same way, even if other communities do them as well. So I'd be curious, and this might be for the next two years. One of the challenges that impedes the ability to get younger candidates or new candidates is incumbency. And you don't have to opine on this now. But I'd be curious the committee's discussion on perhaps after three years of service, a fourth year, the compensation for a council member is either cut in half or it's eliminated. The salary and service in a term four and onward would be at no salary at all. You might still receive city benefits, which needs to be acknowledged. But to try and kind of extract the value of institutional knowledge, but also facilitate the proper turnover of those who serve. And invite opportunities, incumbency is an elephant in the room in every single community. As a four termer myself, I know exactly what it's about. So I think that's an interesting, unique, no one does it part of the equation. I'd love to have the committee chew on and see if that might also be a recommendation. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. If it reduced or eliminated compensation and whether it's the third term or fourth term. Maybe some benchmark, if you're going to serve a fourth term, you're doing it for the love of the game.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, I think it's really interesting. It's not something I thought about. I do believe there are other factors that that probably prohibit people from running for for city council. I think many people don't really understand what a city council does. I would I would have to put myself in that category 12 years ago, as far as not really understanding municipal governance. So my baptism was serving as a historic preservation commissioner, and the rest is sort of history. So I don't know how you incent including more people and things like that. So that they could get a taste and they could, you know, be a part of the process. And by extension, then want to participate. I would hate to lose the institutional knowledge that you guys bring. Because I think I think that is important. As we're leading into kind of our first election where there are districts. I think there are unique things that are taking place, but it certainly would be something worth chewing on from a compensation committee. Joe will just have to get some coffee and talk about it because it's fascinating. But yeah, thanks for the observation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not not for not to throw this off the rails. I'm fine as well with my fellow council members proceeding with how how you and the group have recommended. But it really would be an interesting conversation. We see it when there's an open seat, six people run, when there's a body in the seat. Oftentimes, there's one or no challengers. And that's nothing to do with compensation, that's incumbency. So there may be some value and certainly some value in that turnover as well. So we'll get some coffee.
Great.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, that's that's an interesting concept, and I think some committee can dig into a little bit and maybe other other items like that. I always look at this as a spousal compensation. We're up here doing it because we enjoy being involved in our community. It's 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 the policy and being engaged in that and making things better. And it's the spouse who goes, you're going to another meeting. And it's like, well, there's there's a paycheck, I think, at the end of the month. Don't you get that? I mean, that's how I view it. I don't do it for the money. So it's kind of help help on the home front to to make things a little better. But it is interesting when you talk about and compare it to city employees full time, this is their job. Because that is, I I view people who want to serve on city council as a it's a smaller subset of people. It's it's not a widespread thing. It's people who have have to have enjoy going to meetings, which is a small, small amount. But also who are willing to dive in and have a group that when you leave that night, half of half of them is mad at you and the other half is happy. But and so sometimes I get a little anxious when we talk about, well, we looked at, you know, this is what the general employees are receiving. So we're trying to keep up with that when I'm going. Yeah, I I don't know if that's quite comparing apples to apples at at times because of that uniqueness of the position. I think we need to have compensation. I think we need to keep up to a degree, but I don't think it has to be the same. It's also, I think, it's kind of a fallacy to say, well, the more people you have, the odds may increase. But if you have five people going for a seat, all five could be like, eh, you know, they they really have the skill set to do it? And you could have two people in the same district going, and they're both fantastic. Anyway. So i- if it does, we do need to have the compensation. It does have to kind of keep up. Do we have to keep it up with rate of inflation, I get to a degree? Keep up with general employees? It's a hard one. You guys spend a lot of time on it, and I appreciate it. So, you know, I'm inclined to support that because that's why we have you do it for us to step back and go, okay. Because there is a vested interest to some degree. And really, you never know what happens election. So the next year, you know, it's going to be somebody else, you know, that's that's collecting that money for the for the amount of hours they put in there. So anyway, just just a couple of thoughts. But I I think exploring further with Joe's idea, that's that's an interesting concept.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogan, I appreciate it. And and don't get hung up too much on the comparison of what city staff got and everything. The the logic that we were really using is we asked ourselves, you know, why were these adjustments made for the city? And it was because of external economic factors. Everything's costing more, fuel's costing more, housing's costing more, everything's costing more. And so we appropriately made the adjustment, you know, for staff, and we felt it was appropriate appropriate to make the adjustment in in these recommendations as well. As far as the 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 future, I I just think it's one to chew on. I will absolutely, and when I say I, Mr. Neri, will take a note that for two years from now, after my coffee with Joe and whoever else wants to join. Bringing up other concepts, I think it's appropriate to explore that. It's a good group to explore that with. So I'm happy to take that back as work to do in the future. I don't want this, I what I don't want the committee to become is, you know, just some, you know, what are the micro adjustments? I like tackling bigger thoughtful things. So I think Joe provided something that, you know, that's a little more meaty that we can chew on and and because I believe in life, you get what you incent. So what are we incenting through this compensation? What are we incenting through the process and make sure that we're doing the right thing?
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question.
That's one pro.
So in your slide, you said that you discussed the proposed increases. As a result, let's see, only even the proposed increases only result in appropriate corrections based on inflation rates and expected value. Is that value that the public expects from their elected officials? Or what what did you mean by that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perot. Yeah, this is this topic that I think that I've touched on the last two times, this this expected value. This is the this is the high standard that you guys have set for yourselves. The fact that we're seeing you in the city, the fact that we know that you guys are putting in a lot of time outside of city council meetings. You guys aren't sitting up here, obviously seeing the things for the first time. You know, you've done research, you've read staff reports, you're coming with thoughtful questions, you're doing research on your own, you're showing up at city events. So this expected value is the is the sum total of this is this is kind of that that's the standard that you've set. And we want to continue to invest in that standard. We 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 don't want to pay less, we want more of those kind of activities. And we feel that by making these recommendations, we're going to continue to get that. Be a much different conversation if we thought you guys were all just short time in it and and looking for spousal checks.
Fair enough. Council, any further questions or comments? Or would you like providing direction to legal? I I feel like I heard general consensus, but I'd rather have someone from council say it so that legal knows what to bring back for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Yeah, I think, you know, it would come back as a resolution. Is that correct, Bill?
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this comes back as an ordinance. So we can put it on for next week if you'd like. You can put it on for the first reading if you want to have a public hearing opportunity, the next opportunity will be the eighth. So it's really your call. I mean, you can put it on for one meeting or you can put it on for a hearing next week if you want. I don't hope to get the word out that quickly, but really, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. I I think it's very appropriate to allow for public comment. So if you were, I'm going to just speak on behalf of the committee. We didn't talk about that, but I I think it's appropriate to agenda and put it out there. If nobody shows up, that's fine. But I do think that this is in the category as you guys are being thoughtful to allow the public to weigh in.
If that's the case, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that we would be put it on next week's agenda for just the first reading only. Then the second reading on the eighth would be a public opportunity to participate. And then if, yeah, and whenever that comes out, you can pass it that night or put it on for another week. You just need to have it done by that 15th date to beat the statutory requirement of when it has to be done.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Wish for Mr. Neri, are they, is it two separate ordinances, one for mayor and one for council? Are they tied?
They're two separate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Sounds like I think everyone is agreement with moving forward with those two ordinances. And having that as you laid out for that plan, I agree. I don't think Councilman Cavanagh would disagree having public input, so.
Then we'll have the recommendations coming back in the form of ordinances for the public process moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, kudos to everyone in front of the committee.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Nolan.
I move that we go into executive section per Idaho Code 74 dash 26206A1A.
Have a motion second to go into executive session, is there any discussion? If not, court collateral.
Perot. I. Schrader.
I.
Overton.
I.
Borton.
Bye.
Hogan.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries, and we'll move into executive session. All eyes motion carries and we'll move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Have a motion second come out of executive session on favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yes, have it. And we're out of executive session.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Move that we adjourn our work session.
Have a motion adjourn all in favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yes, have it. We are adjourned. Council will call this meeting order for the record is July 18, 2023 at 6:05 PM. We'll begin tonight's regular state council meeting with roll call attendance.
Councilwoman Perrow. Councilwoman Strater here. Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilman Hogland.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Kavanagh.
Here.
And Mayor Simison.
Yeah. Next time much as the pledge of allegiance, if you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Darrell Zachman. If you all would please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Mayor Simison and city council members, I'm humbled and honored to be able to present the invocation today. We read in Psalm 121, "I lift up my eyes to the hills. From where does my help come? My help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. He will not let your foot be moved. He who keeps you will not slumber. Behold, he who keeps Israel will never slumber nor sleep." Would you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, we look to you as our constant source of help at all times. May everything discussed tonight and every decision made be overseen by you, the sovereign Lord. Grant grace to our mayor and city council members to make wise, righteous decisions as those who will give an account to you. Thank you for blessing those who seek you and establishing their ways. Bless our city with your presence, peace, and prosperity. Deliver us from evil people and make this a safe place for all our residents. We ask these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. I'm quick, you want to sign up under future meeting topics?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so with that, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to do something again.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Move the adoption of the agenda as published.
Have a motion second to adopt the agendas during discussion. If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? And the agenda, I have the agenda adopted, there is no one signed up under the public forum future meeting topics. So with that, we will move into our department commission reports. The first item up is a proclamation with the Oihe High School softball state champions day. If I could have Coach Martin and the team join me at the podium, I'd appreciate it. We want to put you behind the podium because you're all getting an opportunity to speak into it. So just make it easier to do that. It'll be easy, don't worry, don't worry, no worries. Council, we're here once again. To celebrate an Oihe High School state champion. This is becoming a regular occurrence here at the city of Meridian. And as I like to remind the mayor of Star, it is in the city of Meridian. Although I'm sure maybe some of you fine people might live in another city, but we appreciate you representing the city of Meridian and the athletic accomplishments that you all have. So we're going to do a proclamation and then Coach, well, you say some words and then have every member go by and at least just say their name, position, and year in school. Pretty simple from that standpoint, but we really appreciate you being here. So with that, whereas being an Oihe High School's softball player is more than making pitch, making pitching, fielding, hitting, and achieving state titles. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience. All traits needed to succeed on the field, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas the hard work and dedication of the Oihe softball team and coaches resulted in the storm claiming the first softball state title in schools history. And whereas the storm completed the regular season with the record of nine and three in conference and 24 overall, had 85 home runs on the season as a team. And whereas the storm softball team finished the season with the 26-5 record, went on to their first Idaho 5A baseball state title by taking a 13-3 win in the championship game to bring the trophy home to Meridian. And whereas the leadership training and discipline of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents, passion, determination, and becoming a winning team. Each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I, Mayor Roberty Simpson, hereby proclaim July 18, 2023, as Oihe High School softball state champions day in the city of Meridian and call upon the community to join me in congratulating the Oihe high storm on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament that this day, 18th of July, 2023. So on behalf of the city, congratulations on this accomplishment. And with that, I'll turn it over to the coach.
Thank you so much. I'm head coach Tess Martin. I just want to say on behalf of entire Oihe softball, thank you for the community's support. Couldn't have done it without everybody, our administrators, teams, parents, everybody. We just had a tremendous amount of support. So without further ado, I'll introduce my assistant coach, Jordan Ketchum.
Did my job for me. Jordan Ketchum, varsity assistant.
My name's Alexa Rice and I just graduated this year. And I'm an outfielder and I'm going to play at Trisha Valley Community College.
My name is Samantha Hatzinbeller. I'm a left fielder and pitcher and I will be a senior and I played at Oihe High School.
I'm McKenna Shab. I'll be a junior and I played at Oihe High School also and I'm a catcher outfielder.
My name's Riley Hayth and I'm a center fielder and I'm committed to Utah Tech and I'll be a senior.
My name's Sabella. I go to Oihe as well and I'm going to be a junior.
My name is Kina Watts and I'm a shortstop in pitcher and I'm going to be a senior.
I'm Brooklyn Schneider. I'm an infielder and I just graduated and I'm going to Western Oregon University.
I'm Grace Brooks. I'm a pitcher and I will be a junior.
My name's Isabella Fazio. I'm an outfielder and I'll be a junior.
My name's Molly Buckingham. I'm a first baseman and I'll be a senior.
I'm Bailey Brooks. I'm a first baseman and I just graduated.
I'm Elena Bryant. I'm a catcher third base and I'm going to be a junior.
I'm Kendall Townsend. I'm a pitcher and I'm going to be a senior.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, as you're coming back up, it's a good reminder for the council. Sometimes the city plays the Chamber of Commerce in an annual softball game. And so, Mayor, maybe it's appropriate to open up your office for 20 or 30 internships in preparation for the next time we play them.
Great advice. All right, with that, we'll move on to item two this evening, which is approval of the fiscal year 2023 amended revenues and expenditures in the amount of $217,401,857.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Yes, we do need to take action on this, on these next three items for our budget for current year and upcoming fiscal year and foregone. So for item number two, I would move that we approve the amended revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2023 in the amount of $217,401,857.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion? If not, then, Mr. Mayor, do we need a roll call?
Mr. Mayor, I think this is just to publish, is that correct? So, yeah, a voice vote's fine. So this is just to publish that number to the public.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yes, have it. And item two is agreed to. Next item up is item three, which is tentative approval of fiscal year 2024 proposed revenues expenditures in the amount of $233,617,300.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I move that council approve the proposed revenue and expenditures. Let me start that again. They have a different word in here. This is a tentative approval. So, Mr. Mayor, I move that council move to tentatively approve the proposed revenues and expenditures for fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $233,617,300.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavanagh.
We have a proposed date for the public hearings then on the budget that we want to include within this motion.
August 15th is the proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Jenny.
Is there further discussion? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Yes, have it. And item three is agreed to. Next up is item four, which is approval to reserve all foregone revenue associated to the fiscal year 2024 budget in the amount of $635,085 in order to utilize that amount in subsequent years.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
I move that council elects to reserve all foregone revenue associated to the FY 2024 budget in order to utilize an amount in subsequent years in the amount of $635,085.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay?
Nay.
Would this opposed way that approves stand okay with the council or would people like re-recorded separately? I have a verbal order to, but does that work for council? Councilman Kavanagh.
Mr. Mayor, I like my opposition recorded, please.
Okay, if the court call her all.
Perrow.
Aye. Strater. Nay. Overton.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hogland.
Aye.
Kavanagh.
Four eyes to nays and the item is great too. Next up is item five, which is a public hearing for Laver Heights, number two, H2023-0028. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton for a joke.
Riddle. A riddle. You ready?
Yes.
A bat and a ball cost $1.10. The bat costs a dollar more than the ball. How much does the ball cost?
That's what the shooter's thinking.
Say it again. Bat and a ball cost a dollar ten. The bat costs a dollar more than the ball. How much does the ball cost?
It seems like a simple math problem, but you said it's a riddle.
Not a riddle. It's simple math. But it's a test on initial perception and reacting quick to a problem versus pausing. And what it illustrates. So, any idea? Not a trick.
Train arrived at the station at six oh five.
Because the initial reaction's ten cents. Five cents. Nickel. Who said nickel? Five cents. Initial reaction's ten cents.
Yeah.
Right? So it's a test to show your initial reaction's not always right. Pause and reflect. Five cents. Interesting.
I went back to carrying the two X to the other side and dividing, but.
Well, I could think it was there once was a lady from Attucket, so I was stuck after that.
Are we ready? Yes. All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Linda Ritter with the planning department. Tonight, we have here a request for a vacation. The property is located at six two five six South Macheta Avenue and send the R four zoning district. The request is for a vacation of the suddenly one point two feet of a five foot wide public utility drainage and irrigation easement along the northern border boundary of lot eleven, block nine of Levener Heights subdivision number two. A property boundary adjustment, PBA two zero two two dash zero zero two seven was approved that shifted the northernly side property line one point two feet to the north to account for the existing home that was inadvertently constructed within the easement area and the required five foot wide side yard setback. Relinquish relinquishment letters have been submitted from all the impacted utility companies consenting to the partial vacation of easement as proposed. Letters were received from Boise Project Board of Control, New York Irrigation District, CTC Telecom, Idaho Power, Inner Mountain Gas Company, and Sparklight. Staff is therefore recommending approval for this vacation. At this time, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here?
Mr. Mayor, they have not signed up online.
See who we do have several people online. If there's anybody online who's who's the applicant for this item, if you can use the raise your hand function. No one is raising their hand.
Mr. Mayor.
As one pro.
If the applicant isn't here, I do have a question for staff. Do you happen to know how this came to be if there was just an error on the construction company's part to build the stem wall over the property line, or I mean, this obviously is a little concerning that this may not be the only property either in that development or in other developments where, you know, where we have an issue with this. So I just would, the narrative didn't give a background on how this came to happen, and it sounds like it's currently under construction. So. I'd really would like to know more history on it before I agree or don't agree.
Councilwoman, I as far as I know, the house is already constructed. So it's already built, and so they did a boundary line, a property boundary adjustment to correct the issue, but they still had to go through the vacation process. I can't assume what happened. This occurred before I started my tenure here at the city. If I had to guess, it was probably project management on the site at the time that the footings were put in or whatever. I can't lay blame to any person.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Yeah, I I'm comfortable with moving forward with this. These are, these do happen from time to time. There's no impact that will occur. It in terms of, we've got the letters from everybody. Everybody's been notified. So the easements are still protected. It's just an adjustment to to make this move forward. So unless council has heartburn over over moving forward without hearing from the applicant, and even if that question were answered, there's nothing that we can do to change that. So that's, you know, we can still get an answer from them. Linda, you want to follow up with them, but I'm good with making that motion if council agrees.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I don't know whether the property's been sold to a homeowner. I feel terrible if that's already happened for that homeowner's sake. And and I, and so in that regard, I definitely this is necessary. My concern, however, is that I don't know if people are paying enough attention that this was set a precedent or not. But it is a little concerning to me that there may be an impression that accuracy doesn't need to be present if vacations are acquired easily enough. So I don't know, maybe I'm reading too much into it. I don't want to disadvantage the the property owner by any means because this is really important for them to legally be in the correct boundary on their map, but at the same time also have a lot of concerns about kind of what this means. So to your question, Councilman, Council President Hoagland, I'm happy to go ahead and vote on it, but wouldn't I would appreciate if staff could do a little more research for us since the applicant's not here.
Absolutely. I will find out the information and respond.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
As long as you're.
Just a comment for applicants and this applicant in the future, it's poor form not to appear before city council when you make a request. And I think even for something that's, you know, a straightforward decision, I think it shows a lack of diligence, and I would encourage future applicants to appear before us. I think it's important, and I just wouldn't like to see this happen on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one Cavanagh.
Everybody makes mistakes. This is an applicant that we see on a fairly regular basis. It is not their brand necessarily to miss something like this. So my, I'm going to chalk it up to a a fluke accident, but I agree with Councilor Schrader. This is not a I think this is the very first time I've supported maybe a potential motion for approval where the applicant hasn't been present, and and I don't anticipate that this is going to be the status quo moving forward, but I also want to give an applicant who's done a lot of work in our community, has a pretty good track record, the benefit of the doubt is probably just a miscommunication or a scheduling mistake.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
As well, hold on.
I move that we close.
It is a public hearing. We have at least need to ask for if we've had in public that like to provide testimony on this. And do we have anyone sign up on the sign up?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there anybody present who would like to provide testimony on this item, either in the audience or online? Seeing no one raising their hand online or anyone coming forward, and the applicant not here for any final comments. Councilman Holton.
Mr. Mayor. I know staff will get their first one is is more fun than anticipated, but I move that we close the public hearing for Laverne Heights, number two, H twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two eight.
I have a motion and a second to approve item five. Is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favor sign by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Guys, having the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
After considering all staff and and after considering all staff testimony and council discussion, I move to approve file number H twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two eight as presented the staff report for the hearing date of July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I have a motion and a second to approve item five, which is H twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two eight. Is there a discussion? If not, court color all. Perro. Aye. Strater. No. Overton.
Aye.
Horton.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Five eyes, one no, and the item is agreed to. Next time is public hearing for Linder Village, H twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 five. Open this public hearing for staff comments.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Sonia Allen, Planning Division, presenting tonight. The applicant for this project is requesting continuance to August twenty-second in order to reevaluate the development plan for lots twelve and thirteen due to economic factors. I believe the applicant is online tonight to respond to any questions you may have on the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any questions for staff? Okay, do you have any questions? Would you like to hear from the applicant? And if you hear from the applicant, are you going to want to hear from others who are here present?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Absolutely. I would like to hear from the applicant, particularly regarding what economic factors have caused them to request a continuance, and I would also encourage us to open the public hearing to members of the public that are present in light of the fact that this is the second continuance on this application.
Okay, and with that, with is the applicant here to, would they like to provide testimony?
The applicant is online, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, they're raising their hand.
Members, council, my name is Mandy Brozo, representing CSHQA Architects. Online, I have Michael Slaven, who will speak to the continuance.
Okay.
Michael Slaven, can you unmute yourself?
Let's see, I believe I'm muted. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can. Just speak loudly, please.
Okay, let me try to get close to the microphone, and I do apologize for the, I'd say, late notice and to expand more on our reasoning for a continuance is that, you know, as anybody can, you know, hopefully appreciate is is, you know, we went through a pandemic, cost of capital is doubled. Interest in in a couple of the real estate uses we were looking at has, I'd say, subsided. We were planning on working with a joint venture partner on lots eleven and twelve, or sorry, twelve and thirteen. And so in the last round, we were almost having a new site plan together. I feel we're close to having a site plan together. That combined with the fact of reading, you know, some of the comments that came in in the form of letters in anticipation of this application. We also realized that the site plan that was communicated at neighborhood meeting is misleading. And so we feel that what we're working on is is hopefully going to be better received by the community. And so for those reasons, and this is, this is a really tough decision for us because, give you a little bit of background. We're trying to tackle multiple factors with this development agreement modification. One is that we we've removed quite a bit of, well, not really removed, we added more pedestrian pathways. And so what that allows us to do is build buildings that have been planned for over a year. I know it's part of this application called the collection in the barn. In respect of your time and the planning staff's time, we've tried to combine different factors in this development agreement modification, including, you know, our new plans for twelve and thirteen, which are always considered to be phase two, which we were always supposed to go back to council to get your blessing on. And so we, as much we'd even like to bifurcate the issue, because we'd love to get started on the barn and the collection. We don't want to have this hearing and then have to reapply for a new hearing since we're so close to having something to present for lots twelve and thirteen. And so again, I do apologize for the the late nature of this, but we also don't waste your time with the wrong plan just to come back again to reapply for a new plan.
Thank you. Council, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Just a follow up question. I mean, could you explain further the specific timing? You know, requesting this a half an hour before the public hearing is, to me, highly inappropriate. I just, I want to understand, you know, did did your joint venture partner drop out today, or, you know, what what exactly, you know, kind of caused the urgency? And just a comment, I would encourage you to withdraw the application, frankly. I think that it's unfair to members of the public to expect them to appear to a third public hearing that's been scheduled on this kind of notice in the middle of the summer in light of the amount of changes that you've requested. I think it would be more appropriate for you to withdraw the application, get your financing together, get your equity together, get a site plan that's comprehensive, and come back in six months. That's just me, but I, and I'm known for being very frank, but that that is what I would urge you to do.
Yeah, to to answer your question, there was a pretty last minute circumstance, really, I'd say, out of respect of a partner not wanting to mislead us or the city and input us with a site plan that ultimately we wouldn't execute on. Well, one thing I would like to comment on in this light is that, you know, for the development agreement modification, it really is modifying, you know, two documents or two plans. One's a circulation plan, one's a use map. And I feel what's also been misconstrued is that, you know, with a lot of the letters that we're seeing, there's pushback, which would be more of the nature of an application for a CUP and not necessarily for updating a circulation plan as well as a use map.
Mr. Slaven, would you stop? Mr. Mayor, you're you're really messing up, or he's really messing up the record. He now he's sussifying about the project. You have to confine this to just the continuance is fine, but if you're going to hear the project, then you have to hear the whole thing. And so if Slaven, I, you can't talk about the project.
And I thought that we were talking about the project, which is why we were going to take public testimony, or is public testimony only going to be allowed related to the continuance?
Well, the problem, Mr. Mayor, from the court's perspective, if appealed and you have partial public testimony tonight, and then a different presentation in a month, you're going to have a very muddy record for a district judge to try to figure out of what the decision was based on and when it was made. Whatever they want to present, they need to present it and then have a public comment. I recognize what Councilor Schrader said. It's just true. It's not very fair, and there are other ways to do that. You can renotice and other things, but I get that part of it. I'm more concerned with the record moving forward. So either you confine to the continuous and either continued or not, or have the presentation and and go forward. So I don't think we can split it both ways.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If I may. While you may want to hear public testimony tonight, I I would caution you. I'm afraid a lot of the testimony you may hear tonight may be immaterial in the future due to changes to the plan that are anticipated to be requested by the applicant. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Continuance is the discussion, and there's changes that are pretty sizable, and the public needs time to review and prepare and be able to attend and participate meaningful. Why wouldn't we continue it to sometime between Halloween and St. Patrick's Day as opposed to August? Any reason not to put this in the winter?
Is it still open for him?
I'm sorry.
Question, I think, for staff. Let's get staff's comment on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's certainly under your purview to do so. I if if we go that route, the project will definitely need to be renoticed. I hate, I I kind of hate to personally leave the application laying out there in limbo land for that many, for that long. However, I think the applicant does need to firm up the development plan for this site before we go forward. They seem to think that that's adequate time to do so by the twenty-second of August.
Mr. Mayor.
That's important.
The challenge, and I understand that the challenge, I think, for the decision makers in the public is it might not be enough time for those two pieces of the puzzle. In staff as well. So I think that's some of the concern you're hearing that I don't know why August twenty-second, it seems extremely fast in light of the changes that might be coming and light of the concerns rightfully expressed about public participation and input. That needs to be meaningful if it's going to happen, in my opinion. So the greater period of time for the applicant very well might help the applicant utilize that time, communicate well with the public, share the information, get buy-in. It might be a more clear path. It might be a more clear path to a chance of success by going slower.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kev.
Maybe just even to dovetail on Councilmember Borton's comments. I mean, this is a part of our community where the neighbors have been really invested and really involved in how their part of Meridian looks. And so maybe even if we're going to continue this at a certain point in time, give the applicant another time, another bite of the apple with maybe a neighborhood meeting to meet with the residents, talk about what they're wanting to achieve. It, it sounds like from the applicant's standpoint that they feel there's maybe some misunderstanding about what they're wanting to do versus what the neighbors perceive. While a, a neighborhood meeting where they can speak candidly with each other may be beneficial and may also warrant a little bit longer time for a continuance than to the middle of August.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
Question, Sonia, is it the, the material, if we were to continue to August twenty-second, is the sixteenth the earliest that the information be published for residents to, to look over that plan?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Sonia Allen. My updated staff report would be due to the clerk on August fifteenth. However, any updated application information would need to be submitted at least fifteen days prior to that hearing date. I did look at the notice that went out for this project. I don't believe that it will require a renotice for what the applicant's plans to propose and changes.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
Or whatever we decide to continue this to, I mean, that's, that's going to be the timeline. You know, is, is when, when that comes out. We could ask the applicant if they'd be willing to, to publish that sooner as opposed to later. And especially if we move it to, say, a September date to have that at least two, two weeks in advance for the public to give people more time to, to take a look at that and submit comment. Mr. Slavin, what, what would you be willing to do on that sort of thing?
Thank you so much, counsel and Mr. Ogden. We, we, we are prepared to move quickly. And again, all this is happening in real time. So I'd like to suggest two things if you'd like to entertain it. In, in one sense, we would be in a position to notice quickly and, and set up a neighborhood meeting. And as long as neighborhood group could meet, you know, prior to August twenty-seventh, we'd love, or sorry, twenty-second, we'd love to keep that date. I feel that we're prepared to do that. In the other sense, if that's untenable, is that we've really been working close with, with planning staff and trying to, you know, create less burden for, you know, all involved is that we do have a large portion of the project, which is associated with, with phase one that has been contemplated. It's pre-leased. We have, you know, great businesses, a lot of local businesses that want to be a part of this development. And we've tried to combine these two applications to make it more efficient for everybody. And so my, my, my second suggestion is we could bifurcate the application and come back for eleven and twelve to later time. That, that's would be the new portion of what we've referred to as phase two and is referred to in the development agreement as phase two. But we'd hate to derail the, the collection in barn as it's called out in, in the application. So we feel those are so close to being done. We'd love to go build those.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
What I understand is that the applicant would be willing to meet with the neighbors prior to the selected date. That raise the comfort level for those who've discussed that. Let them know of plans in advance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I, I would be supportive of continuing the application to like November fourteenth or later. I think that would give everyone a breather from this. It's been having multiple meetings. I think we could require the applicant to renotice it, be with the neighbors again. I just, at this point, I feel like we're encouraging bad behavior with an additional continuance. We could talk about bifurcating the application. Yeah, I'm open to talking about that because I think it would make it a little easier for people to get their arms around it. But I don't think that the next discussion should take place in August. I just don't think it's reasonable at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kev.
I'm, I'm trying to guess maybe look at this from a resident standpoint. This is the, you had, you had a hearing set. There were some noticing challenges, if I'm not mistaken, to be continued. So, you know, a family goes in that area, plans, they want to come, they want to testify. Okay, it gets rescheduled. There's a logistical hiccup. I can, I can understand that. And then again, circumstances beyond the applicant's control, but a, a last minute hearing again. Summer vacation, families are planning. I think to ask them to come back again a month later is a little early. I don't know if November is, is the right time. It seems a little far out, but I'm also not quite sure that an August timeline is, is fair to our residents. So I know that's probably talking a little bit half all sides of my mouth. I just, I think that, that August is too soon, but maybe November might be too late. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
So how about trying to accommodate the public and the applicant? Why don't we discuss a continuance to the first Tuesday in October? The applicant is willing and able to provide the analysis and complete staff report. If, if, if the representation is it could happen in August, then it's strongly encourage it to be done by the end of August and made available to the public and staff. The public hearing being the first Tuesday in October that affords a thirty-day window. Have it renoticed for that first Tuesday in October. That invites full and fair vetting, not only for our staff, but for the public to participate. And it is a little sooner than November, but I agree with the summer concerns that council members have expressed too. So perhaps that's a, a middle ground that a path to a new hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
To Councilman Morton's point, October third is, is available for scheduling that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Sonia.
Excuse me, Sonia Allen, planning. Counsel, please, if that's your direction, include in your motion if you want the applicant to pay renotice fees on this for the city's noticing costs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Also, if the council wants a specific time when the applicant needs to have it fully submitted, I heard you say end of August, but you would put a hard date as your expect, expectation is that whatever the applicant wants to be heard on October third, it'll all be submitted by a certain date.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Can we do that by motion if, if our code allows a later submittal? And if the hearing date is the first Tuesday of October, it normally can still submit after. We can encourage it. That's kind of what I was thinking is it's in everyone's best interest to have everything in by the end of August.
I, I think you're probably right, Mr. Morton. I was probably being a little too, too precise in trying to do that. I think you're correct.
I would hope, it sounds like the applicants can certainly comply if we could have been ready for an August twenty-second. Shouldn't be any issue being fully submitted by the end of August. And we'll be all ready to roll at October third date, so. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
As to H twenty twenty-three zero 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 five, I move that we grant a continuance of this application to October third, twenty twenty-three, and that the applicant will renotice this application. And that the applicant is strongly encouraged to submit the complete application and any necessary revisions to staff by the end of August twenty twenty-three. And the applicant is to pay for the renoticing fee.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Before, as we get into discussion, does counsel want to hear from any of the public on the continuance issue before we move forward? Okay, so should we withdraw the, the, the motion at this time? There was a second. Yeah.
Second withdrawal is for a second.
Okay, so we will, is there anybody in the public that would like to be heard on the continuance request? You'd like to come forward? And if you are online and would like to be heard on the continues, please use the, raise your, use your, raise your hand for the Zoom. So if you say your name and address for the record.
My name is David Eastman. I live at one one nine two West Bacall Street, Meridian, Idaho. I think it would be entirely appropriate to reschedule the continuance request for the next city council meeting. There was a numerous group of people or a group of numerous people here and the city clerk sent them all home, letting them know that they would not be able to speak on this issue. And so they all left. So they have been basically any right that they had or any opportunity they had to get public testimony on this issue on the continuance has been forfeited. So I think it'd be entirely appropriate to schedule the request or the motion for the continuance for the next meeting where people would have that opportunity.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
As counsel pointed, or legal counsel pointed out, the only argument they can make is whether or not to continue or not. Cannot speak to the issue.
Exactly.
So.
They, they, they were told that they would not be able to give any public testimony.
Correct.
On this.
Correct.
So that was not, that was not accurate.
So if I might ask, sir, then what is your opinion about continuing this October third?
I think it should be rescheduled to the next council meeting where there would be adequate public testimony and it would be a public hearing. The continuance request.
And I, I, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
I guess I'm asking you, should we continue or not?
Well, we'll figure that out once we have adequate public testimony, but we don't at this point.
Okay. Council, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, they were not sent home. They were advised of what was going on and some options that they had.
I was, I asked specifically, Mr. Mayor, if they would have an opportunity to testify, to offer public testimony, and they were told no.
That is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ogden.
Mr. Nary, my misunderstanding something here, but they could not testify to the project. Just to, we've never had a quest to have a public hearing to continue something. Because it's either yes or no, and no is, is, anyway, that is interesting.
Councilman Kev.
Mr. Eastman, appreciate you sticking around to provide this feedback to the council. And so I, I want to make sure that I'm hearing what you're recommending to us is, is what you're recommending. You would like to have all of the neighbors that went home tonight because they were told, they, they were believed that they could not testify about the continuance. To have them come back next week to give us an opinion about when or if we should continue this.
Yes, I mean, they, they should have had the opportunity to do what I'm doing and give an opinion on the continuance. They were, that, that did not, did not exist. The applicant has had their opportunity. The public has their opportunity. And they were sent home, while they weren't sent home, but they were told they, they would not have that opportunity inaccurately.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
Very unusual scenario, but to legal counsel, is this a, a due process issue that we need to make sure we remedy?
Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, it is not. It, the decision on continuing the hearing is solely the council's discretion. Whether a member of the public is in favor of it or not, is not really a, a decision point. It's the discretion of this council on when you want to hear it. So they only could comment on whether or not a different day would be okay. Or again, the other option is don't continue it. Okay, then you're going to hear it. But as the applicant said, what he's considering proposing isn't the same as what's already in the packet. So it would make really little sense from a legal standpoint. But there's no due process to have a right to speak on whether or not you should continue something. That's your discretion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
I appreciate that. And in being lawful is rule number one. And I think some of the, the purpose behind this discussion is to try and address what very well we anticipate public members might express, even without, we've just never had anyone testify or provide comment on a continuance. But I think we're all being sensitive to what the impact of a continuance is. So trying to forecast that, provide additional time, provide public noticing at the applicant's expense, provide some, some amplified deadlines to, to get information out, available to the public that matches what's actually going to be proposed. Seem to be, you know, every step possible to address, encourage public involvement.
Councilman Morton, the applicant testified on the continuance. It were in a public hearing, I assume, right? They had a request for a continuance. And they gave public testimony and details regarding as to why they think a continuance is appropriate. Public has the right, same thing.
Technically, they don't in that regards. Counsel wanted to afford those that were still here an opportunity to weigh in, which is what you're doing. But there is not a public expect, a public right, as Mr. Nary stated, that they would be offered that same opportunity to provide testimony. So right versus right, I think are two questions. But I can't speak for your neighbors if they all want to come back next week at your suggestion.
Thank you. So in regards to the continuance itself, I would say, I would ask the council not to continue this. By virtue of the fact that there's been so much confusion, there've been people that showed up to give testimony numerous times. And I think Councilwoman Straight, Schrader has it correct with, have them withdraw the application, get their ducks in a row. I have, you know, in, in looking at this, in my professional capacity, I've worked on hundreds of millions of dollars of real estate development. I've testified before city councils, county commissioners all over the country. I've asked for one development agreement modification. It was like something miniscule to reduce parking spaces. I treated it very seriously because the development agreement existed and it was something that both parties in good faith had acted on. I don't know how, how to put it. I didn't jerk anybody around. I didn't, I'm trying to put that in a more diplomatic term. But I think it's appropriate in this context to just ask them to withdraw the application, get everything put together and come back with something concrete. They, I mean, it, as, as evidenced by tonight, where people were not given the chance to say the same thing that I'm saying, I think it's appropriate to just have them start over.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Question for legal, but I'm pretty sure we can't compel an applicant to withdraw an application, right?
You cannot.
Yeah, I strongly urged them to, but it's not within our control.
Thank you. Is there any other person that'd like to be heard on the request?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, Sally Reynolds, one one six six West Bacall Street. I appreciate the conversation that just happened. I learned quite a bit. So I do think that, Mr. Nary, you know, while this isn't our right, like you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, there's right and then there's right. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to give my thoughts, even though it's not necessarily my right. The one, the one comments I would have, and I think it is appropriate since it's a public hearing that you do hear from the public. And I think that we, on a continuance, could provide some valuable information about how and when to continue, especially when an application has been so, I guess, high interest to the neighbors and where the developer has really been working with the neighbors very closely. And so to have this come out at five thirty today, yeah, it was a complete shock for us. And as a person who's kind of helping coordinate things, it, it was really, really difficult to have to email and text and everything. The, I'd say over a hundred people, so, who are interested in this application right now. Many of who showed up and it happened to be the summer. So that just shows you how many people are actually interested in this application. So with that said, I, I mean, overall, I would like to see the application withdrawn just because I don't understand how there couldn't be a, a material change that they could have ready so quickly. So that's my first concern is if there's such big of a change, why is it able to be rescheduled so quickly? So November, December, which would be much more appropriate in my opinion. But I, my first request would be to completely have them either reschedule the continuance so that can hear or reschedule it as it is right now in the, denying the application so that they have to come back. I personally would be strongly in favor of bifurcating the application if that is what you choose to do. I was actually going to suggest that as well. So since the application, applicant said that they're willing to do that, I think that there are things in the application that are kind of. I think that there are things in the application that are kind of far apart from each other. And I think it could be more clearly heard if it was two separate applications. With that said, I will, I would like to just speak to council member Cavanagh's comment. I really appreciate you looking at the, the resident's point of view. Mr. Eastman just flew in on a plane today. I got back in a plane on Sunday night and I had company last night and I have my daughter's 16th birthday tomorrow. And so I spent the greater part of today preparing my remarks for tonight. And so while I understand that there are always things that are out of an applicant's control, I do think that what the council does here tonight will send a message as to the behavior and the timing and the form that the city expects from its applicants. And I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Ally, I think you always have been a good standard bearer for neighborly conversations. It's one of the reasons why I probably ask you hard questions because I, I appreciate the cordial nature in which we engage with each other. So Mr. Eastman testified in favor of us essentially continuing this application for one week to give your neighbors the opportunity to come back and testify, not on the application, but on the, the continuance request. And looking at it from the neighbors, if I, if I came back into the week just to say my feelings about a continuance, that may frustrate me. I, I would rather have a date certain of which this was going to be heard. Again, no offense to Mr. Eastman, I appreciate your, your perspective, but I guess I'm asking you the same question, Sally. Is, is that really what you, because you've been such a standard bearer for your neighbors and you've been a very vocal voice in your part of Meridian. Is that really what your neighbors want?
So without asking them, I'm not sure. I can tell you that when I sent out the noticing that it was going to be continued, I got some very, very strong responses. And so due to that, I think there might be some people who would like to testify about the continuance, understanding that it's not necessarily a right that their public, the things they say publicly would just be taken into consideration of the council when they decide on that continuance date, which I think is a huge thing for the residents to know because it's okay, are we, are we going to be able to have a neighborhood meeting, you know? Is it going to be renoticed? Because with this being the third continuance, I think that's entirely appropriate. And then as far as, I mean, I stood here and said, you know, I'm, I'm fine with them bifurcating the application and then maybe continuing one part, you know, going ahead with one and two. But there might be some people who say, no, they should keep it together and you should just decide to continue all or none. So where the applicant is giving some different options, maybe hearing those options from people who have been really involved would also be a fair thing next week. Now, maybe we renotice or maybe we send out something and say, hey, city council decided that it is going to be continued to this date as one big application. Please write into city council in the next week if you have any comments, concerns, I don't know. But then once the decision is made, I don't know that it can be changed, if that makes sense. Unless next week we come and you say, we're voting on the continuance for August 22nd. We've received public testimony that they prefer until October. That type of thing. But I do know there was a strong reaction.
Sally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard on the continuous?
Mr. Mayor and city council, I'm Tony Brownlee, 797 Barrymore. Tony Brownlee, 797 Barrymore. I would urge you to deny the application.
And if we can just get to the this continuance only, not the merits of the application.
Then deny the continuance. Make, make them come back again. If, I can't imagine personally going to have a major business meeting and canceling that 30 minutes beforehand. I can't imagine that. I know I wouldn't have a job if I did that. But I can't imagine you all giving them another bite at the apple and another bite at the apple and another bite at the apple. The death of a thousand cuts. It, it divides logic.
Thank you. Well, counsel, the one thing I will say is the one thing we cannot do is hear this tonight because it's clear that people were sent home. You know, that, that is the one worst case scenario of any action. You want to give the developer a appeal on a decision or residents, you know, it's going to, that's where it will end up. So question becomes how with, to win and how is best to do that? And if you want to hear again from the applicant based on what they've heard, or are you ready for to remake a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
So how would that work? Would we just put them on the next available opportunity, the, the next agenda that has time that they would just have to, they would have to present what they intended on presenting on this evening? How would, how does that work? If we, we say no to continue, does that mean they have to then come and present what they intended on presenting this evening or what happens then?
If you deny the continuous request, I think you hear the project from the applicant at that point in time and yeah.
Then it, I mean, my assumption would be if they don't want to present what they intended on presenting tonight, which they've stated, then they would withdraw. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know that we've, I've ever come across that since I've been here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
What, yeah, this is very atypical. This is like sausage government, right? So I, I think here's the two choices. The, the public's comments now say, continue this one week. And in a week, we're probably going to hear the applicant say, I want to continue this. And at that point, we'd have the public say, don't continue it. And we'd make a decision like we're trying to do tonight. Or tonight, we continue it to a date beyond that. So the reason I, I, I think I totally get what you're saying. I think I don't see a lot of net progress if an applicant, let's say, withdraw the application today and refile it and they, they pay for and do notice the neighborhood meetings and have a public hearing in October. It's kind of what we're trying to to find some compromise. I think with the motion that I was proposing was to kind of get you to the same net result. So withdrawing the application and refiling it and having an October hearing on the new plan, whatever it is or the adjustments, seems to be the same spot that we're getting in now. So I still think, I understand the concerns. I still think the continuance, the October 3rd, the deadline for submittals, the neighborhood meetings, the applicant provides public noticing kind of gets you to the same spot. As clumsy as this is, to ensure the public can participate in a meaningful manner on the substance of the application. I, I don't see us moving the ball very far if we just bumped it a week. Because there's nothing of substance to really discuss. This is clumsy. And I think that does, I don't disagree with council members and the public. I think it has an impact on the flavor of the application as a whole. A clunky process to get you to an ultimate substantive discussion is not the best way to have an application presented. I think it does have an impact, does raise questions. And the applicant, October 3rd, would probably get many more questions about why does it have to be so clunky to get here? But nonetheless, that's not, that's for a later date. So I'm open to, I'm open to how council, if they want to do something else, but all things considered, I still think the October 3rd continuance with all of the terms and conditions outlined still makes the most sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
At what point is the application? I know, I know when we're doing an initial, when there's initial presentations for land use, but with an, with an MDA, at what point is it different enough for the, for them, us to then say this is too different and this is not the same application. So therefore we don't, do, do you know what I'm saying? It, what, where, where does that, where's that line drawn?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So a, a modified development agreement is simply a contract with the city. So however you modify it, whether it's, again, whatever the, there's no one to remand it to. So you're either going to approve it or deny it. Right? If the land use application, you, if it was changed significantly, you'd remand it back to the planning and zoning condition. They don't hear development agreement modifications. You're the only ones that hear it. So it is completely your discretion on whether to grant the request or not. Whether it's changed, it's changed drastically. That's your call.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overtone.
Wasn't sure I was going to say this, but I, I spent three full days at Dairy Days. And I dealt with probably 15 to 20 people that came up to the booth to talk to me about this project. Wanting to know what they could do. And I directed every one of them to come here tonight. But I need to tell you why. Because before I sat here, I sat in the chair you were sitting at. And I spoke for my subdivision. Ten years on project. I had projects reset. I was frustrated. Our HOA president had to tell him off for tonight, coming back in a few weeks. It's not a part of the system I like. But it's the way the system works. And I sit here now with a different view. I understand everything you're saying. But from the aspect of what's the fairest thing going forward? If you as residents, most take all the new information and be prepared. Think what Councilman Morton proposed. The applicant must have everything in by the end of August. Except for October 3rd. There's a great amount of time for everyone. Get a chance to look at all. Not mess with everyone's summer schedule. And hopefully everyone's prepared for that on October 3rd. I'd be supportive of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Strater. Just a clarification of Councilman Borden's motion. I think the idea of a deadline for all materials to be in is a good one. But I wasn't clear on whether that was a, an actual requirement of the motion or if that was just a guidance to the applicant. It feels like something, you know, maybe two weeks or a month out of the hearing date would be more typical for us as a deadline.
Councilboard.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, that was the strong recommendation. It sounded like from legal, like we couldn't make it a, a binding requirement that prohibited them from submitting stuff in September, but it would most definitely be in their best interest to have it come.
And you could say something to the fact, just on the record, if not in by such date, you will automatically reconsider it for one month later for moving the hearing again. I mean, you could do a lot of things if you want to, but that's about all you can do.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden, sorry.
I wouldn't, I know you're, you're in jest a little bit, but I think the applicant has heard the message crystal clear that everything's October 31. I think we certainly don't want to hear from the public that stuff came in late, things changed in September and that's not in the applicant's best interest. We want to have the public side by side in this discussion.
August.
August 31st, have everything submitted. Or a is wide open discussion October 3rd.
Was second, the motion, if it's.
Can you go back and restate the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
We continue H 2023 0005 to October 3rd, 2023. At the applicant, at the applicant's expense, renotice that public hearing that the applicant is strongly encouraged to have all submittals to the city staff, no later than August 31st, 2023. Allowing all of that to be viewed and discussed by the neighbors or the public, I should say. And that only in another neighborhood meeting, that public posting, this application in whatever form it is, we heard October 3rd.
Mr. Mayor.
And looking for a second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
A second for discussion. Councilwoman.
I would just urge the applicant once again. I mean, I think it just leaves a bad taste in everybody's mouth. The, when the process is like this. And if you don't have your ducks in a row by the end of August, I really think you need to withdraw the application. I, I would have encouraged you to do that in this meeting. I think that would have actually been better for you. But you know, if you're not willing to do that, then I, I think just make sure it's all ready to go by the end of August or please withdraw it.
Is there further discussion on the motion? If not, all favors combined by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed nay. Guys have it and the item is continued. Thank you. Counsel, anything under future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion?
Mayor.
Councilboard.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho Code 74-206A1A.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, go into executive session. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carry, and we will move into executive session.